Evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting on Wednesday, October 21st. Can I have a roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
J.P. Kozinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here. Will we all please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes on October 7th? Second. Motion is second for approval of the October 7 minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay. Public speak time. If there's someone from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearings, please come forward. I recognize everyone in the audience, so I don't think I'd hear. Okay. Communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Counselor Rist, just want to mention our communication from the planning.
Yeah, we have the recommendation for the planning board. It's the update to the city zoning map. I don't think any action has to take place on this.
No.
So it is for our information only.
Okay. That is currently with ordinance and planning, so it's going to be.
It's already in plan, ordinance or.
Financial. Are you speaking? Are you, Melissa, I'm sorry. Are you?
Financial Director. I think we went through it.
I think we talked about it.
Oh.
No news is good, you.
Did you want to mention that?
Sure. This just came.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Is that what you're saying?
We have one more announcement.
Okay.
Did you just give me this Salem?
Salem just.
I did. Salem's gonna announce it.
Okay. So for an announcement, for all of those parents who have student athletes, the Greater East Hampton Student Athlete Foundation is presenting a program called Get Recruited, the College Athletic Recruiting Seminar. It's October 24th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. at the new East Hampton High School auditorium. And the cost for East Hampton High School parents and Hampshire Regional Parents is $10. It's free to students from those schools. And this is something that if you were going to go to it outside of the schools would cost around $50. So it's a good deal, and it has a lot of really good information about students who are planning to play sports after high school.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
When I'm talking about communications, I just wanted to say thanks again to Nikki Dees. I don't know how many of us noticed the van, the shuttle van parked out in front of the building today. That's a really attractive van. Very clean interior, looks good, should give us a lot of good service. Thank you to Nikki Dees.
Great. And I'm sorry, Finance Director Zwazki, did you want us to stand in for the mayor tonight, or is there just no mayor communications as far as? Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I needed to know. So it's time to move on to standing committees, rules and government regulations. Counselor Rist.
No report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Finance, Counselor Hagan.
Finance, first, I left a copy of the city motor vehicle list to all the counselors because I know we have a lot of vehicles before the finance committee, so a couple of counselors inquired about how many vehicles the city had, and so I left everyone a copy. I also left a sheet for the amount in free cash and retained earnings for your perusal. On our agenda, I need to set four public hearings, and I'll do them in order. And these will all be for the November, excuse me, there'll be five public hearings. These will all be for the November 4th meeting. One is for the FY 2016 tax classification, and the other four are for supplemental appropriations, one for $30,000 for a three-quarter ton pickup, one for $46,200 for a three-quarter ton pickup, and another for $47,000 for replacement of a three-quarter ton pickup, and $68,000 for design of a replacement water main under the Ferry Street Bridge. And I'll make that in the form of a motion for public hearings on all those matters.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to set public hearings on November 4th for the four previously read supplemental appropriations, as well as FY 2016 tax classification. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Our next meeting will be next Wednesday, the 28th, at 6:00 p.m. in Room 1, and that's it until new business.
Do you want to do that extension for the.
Oh, yes, thank you, President McCoy. I'd also like a 90-day extension on the kettle donation account, as the mayor is still obtaining information from the city solicitor on that.
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second, for 90-day extension on the kettle donation account. Additional comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
As I said, other than the new business which we can take up, that's it for now.
There's so much we'll do at the end. Public safety, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The review of the street acceptance protocol is ongoing, and I would like to request a 90-day extension for that, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, for a 90-day extension for the review of the street acceptance protocols. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you. And then, we met last week with Representative Verizon, Paul Davis, I believe, about two utility requests on Brook Street, and I would like to set a public hearing for that for our next meeting, please, which is November 6th, I believe?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, to set a public hearing on November 4th for the utility request on Brook Street. Additional comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
This concludes public safety.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Counselor Winnie.
I have no report tonight, however, I do have nine appointments in new business. Would you like me to take care of that now?
Well, I've been, we've been doing everybody else at the end, so I'll come back.
Okay.
But thank you for asking. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let everybody know that our next meeting is going to be on the 28th, next Wednesday, at 6:00 p.m. At that point, we're going to review the planning board's recommendation that we got this evening, and look at a couple of things that might have been omitted to bring to the full council. And at that point, I guess I would like to set a public hearing for November 4th at 6:15 p.m. in these chambers on the request to update, amend, correct the city zoning map.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second, to set a public hearing for November 4th on the request to update the city zoning map. Additional discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes. That concludes. Property, Counselor Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. This concludes.
Okay. Old business, pending business, we still are assembling names for the boardwalk naming, but I will like to ask for a, as a form of a motion, a 90-day extension on that.
Second.
A motion, a second, for 90-day extension on the boardwalk naming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Looks like we have time, so why don't we go back to new business? Counselor Hagan, do you want to start?
Sure. I'll do, I have four new supplemental appropriations, and I'll do a first reading. The first is dated October 15th, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $18,000 to be appropriated from free cash in that amount and appropriated to the fire department capital. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase protective clothing for the fire department. The second supplemental appropriation, also dated October 15th, 2015, is requested hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $50,000 to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount, and it'll be appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital project. The amount requested to use for the following purpose, to provide funds for the True Hard Drive Adam Street Pump Station improvements. The third supplemental appropriation, dated October 15th, 2015, is requested hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is $50,000 to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount and appropriated to the water enterprise capital project. The amount requested to use for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase replacement water meters. And the final supplemental appropriation, dated October 15th, 2015, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $150,000 to be appropriated from free cash in that amount and appropriated to capital stabilization. The amount requested to be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to the capital stabilization fund. And I'll make that, those four supplemental appropriations, in the form of a motion that may be sent to finance.
Second.
A motion, a second, to send the supplemental appropriations to finance. Additional discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes. The FY 2016 capital plan, there's no action required, it's just for the councilors' information, so you'll find that in your packet. The next one down, I believe, is ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have a consideration of creating food truck ordinance sent to the ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second, to add, to send to ordinance, a topic of food truck ordinance under, for new business. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. I believe C and D are public safety. Counselor Hayes.
Hi, I would like to make a motion to move to subcommittee to look at the no parking area on Industrial Parkway, credit request from a resident and Chief McMahon.
You want to do, actually, we'll do both of them.
We'll do both of them. And also, to look at on-street parking along the section of Pleasant Street between the former National Field Building to the American Legion.
Second.
A motion, to move to the public safety, the no parking on Industrial Avenue and the on-street parking on Pleasant Street. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Merrill appointments, Counselor Winnie.
Yes, I move that the nine Merrill appointments be moved to appointment subcommittee meeting.
Second.
A motion, a second, to move the nine Merrill appointments to the appointment subcommittee. Any additional questions? Question? I'm seeing all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be November 4th at 5:15 in downstairs in one of the rooms.
Okay. So I think we have about three minutes until public hearings, so, oh, Counselor.
Yep, I forgot to make an announcement earlier that the rag shag parade is coming up this next week. It's going to be on Tuesday, October 27th, at 6:30, starting at the Maple School, and it will be ending in the parking lot for East Hampton Savings Bank.
That's important.
6:30 on Tuesday.
Something about that.
Very important.
Okay. So we'll take, I'll just take a two-minute recess until 6:15, and then we'll reassemble right here. So a motion, a second, open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Counselor Derby, I believe this is you tonight.
Yep. So what we have on the agenda is a proposed special act that gets sent to the legislature for additional liquor licenses. And so the process that our committee went through was to look at the licenses that we had, look at other communities in the area that have proactively gone after liquor licenses that weren't bound to a particular location, like the ones that we have done in the past. We've done quite a few in the past, the Art Bar, Popcorn Noir, Galaxy, The Hideaway. We did one for a resident on Chapman Ave. And so we had, in my tenure, we've done quite a few. And probably about eight years ago, we entertained the idea of going after more, so they could be sent to the licensing board. And the licensing board, if a project came that made sense for East Hampton, they would have the ability to grant a license for that location and that project. Since then, other communities have gone after these. For example, Holyoke, Northampton, Hadley, which we looked at pretty closely, Hadley went for 12 over-quoted liquor licenses. And they, they did a mixture of six full and six wine and malt. So as we deliberated, we decided, we settled on a number, looking at, you know, probably since, it's been 10 years since I've been on the council, looking at a 10-year view, how many potentially could East Hampton support? And we came up with the number of eight, four full and four wine and malt. Two of the specifics that are important to note is we specifically put an emphasis on the Mill Industrial District and the Downtown Business District as areas, and Union Street specifically. We didn't write it in the act, because I wasn't sure how the legislature would react to us putting a specific street in. So those are the two areas that we felt would, could benefit the most from, from these. So what you have in front of you is basically the culmination of our, you know, work on this over the last few months. And again, I will say that I am going to abstain from this, because my wife owns a business in the Mill Industrial District, so, but I will, I can answer any questions if you guys have questions.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public or the city who would like to address the council concerning this act? If you could just come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Jason Due to 13 Winter Street, and I'm also a member of the licensing board here in town. I have read this over, and I heard what Counselor Derby had said, and I certainly don't have, as a member of the licensing commission, I don't really have any problems with this at all whatsoever. The only, the only thing that, that Counselor Derby did mention about having an emphasis on certain areas of town, and I didn't see where that, you said it really wasn't specifically written into that, so is there some direction who would be, that would be given to any applicant who came for an over-quota license?
Well, the, what is written in here is that we give, we will give, let me see if I can quote it here.
Highest preference.
Highest preference to applicants that are located within the Mill Industrial or Downtown Business districts.
And I guess I also need to ask is, how much has the ABCC already been consulted with the language of any of this?
So the language that we use from this is basically language that has been approved from our over quotas and from surrounding communities' over quotas that went for bulk licenses.
Right.
And the legislature does review it as well.
Well, they would anyway.
Yes.
Right. So really, the procedure for, for these licenses really wouldn't be that much different than the procedure would be for an over-quota license as it stands now.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
As a risk. I'm not sure, well, first, Jason, one of the things I was going to ask you is, in your experience, are these a valuable thing to have for the community in the sense that you know of, you know that they'll go, that they'll be used? I mean, I want to see businesses expand, especially restaurants, et cetera, in town.
Yes.
But I'm curious if you thought these would last 10 years? What did you say? 10 years?
10 years is our view.
I didn't think they would, but what do you think?
How do you mean last? You mean the license itself?
You would issue them within the 10-year period. I thought you'd issue them within a five-year period easily.
Right. Well, it's hard to say. As far as issuing them are concerned, is concerned, there have been a couple of over-quota licenses that were issued that, I think, looking back, that maybe we, there should have been a little more scrutiny and/or follow-up by the board itself. But I think over the last few years now that we've seen the demand for it, there has been more scrutiny, because we understand how important they are. Now, as far as the issuing of them is concerned, I guess the best way I could answer that question, Counselor, is that it's very hard to say how quickly people would come in for this. I do like the provision that is specifically written in there, is that it's the same as an over-quota license, in that it cannot be transferred, it cannot be transferred or sold.
Right.
What I was going to mention, I had just forgotten, is the, the idea that it can't be transferred, but if the business stays under the same, if it's used for exactly the same, if a restaurant has an over-quota license and it's, and it changes hands, that that new owner of that restaurant, albeit one that's going to be using the license in the same manner, same fashion, wouldn't have to go for another over-quota license. That was the language I was more concerned about what the ABCC would say about it. I think, speaking for the board, we would have no problems with that at all whatsoever. I think that that's, that's logical. I'm not sure I answered your question.
No, you answered my first question. The second question might be more for Counselor Derby, but you're, you might want to hear it. How do you enforce the preference? I mean, if someone comes in and they're not in these zones, are they supposed to delay issuing that license till they see if others might come? I'm a little concerned about how that's enforced.
So, so the spirit of it is to try to encourage, you know, some more development in those areas. However, we wanted to leave a little bit of judgment on the part of the licensing board, which we felt that they would be able to do fairly easily. So if a business that was established and did not fall within one of these zones would not be completely shut out. So for example, if a year goes by and nobody applies for these, and Captain Jacks decides they want to get a license and they're in highway business, it would not preclude them from being able to get a license. However, if they're, all of the licenses were applied for, and there, you know, every, there were people vying for them, then the preference would go to those projects that were in the Mill Industrial or Downtown Business.
Okay.
Does that clarify?
That clarified.
Counselor Hagan. Just a question for Jason. I know the last couple of over quotas, it was a little contentious between some of the board members. I think the board now is changed, the makeup of the board has changed from the last over-quotas that were issued. And my question is, and a follow-up to that is, has there been any, I know there's no probably formal applications that have been filed, but has there been any, like, inquiries to the board, like, anyone come forward, like, asking about them or considering about over-quotas?
About over-quotas? I know there was one, maybe two, but there hasn't been, as of late, there really hasn't been that much activity, is people inquiring about it. So it does lead one to the question, is really how necessary is this?
Right, exactly.
And from my perspective, I don't really see the, the application process for an over-quota license as it stands now to be all that cumbersome, as, I mean, could see from the last few that have been issued the last, in the last, since I've been on the board, it, it wasn't that much of a hassle. I mean, there are more steps that have to be taken than if a business closes and there's an open license. I also personally think that the over-quota license is a, is a better tool, in that it takes the monetary jockeying out of the, out of the equation entirely. Whereas maybe a few years ago, three, four years ago, there were some maybe hurt feelings about people who had spent money on, on their licenses. And now with the influx of, or the interest in having over-quota licenses, people, although they have to jump through hoops, they don't have to spend, you know, upwards of $20,000, $25,000 to get a license when one comes free. I think a lot of those are going to start cycling out anyway. So I like the over-quota system as it stands. I, I don't mind this language at all whatsoever. I think it's fine. And the idea of maybe trying to put some more emphasis on certain sections of town, I also think that those are sections of town we probably would see that, that, that kind of interest anyway. But certainly, again, from my perspective, I think the language is fine.
Just one more follow-up. Do we have the call for beer and wine licenses? I know, again, going back, some of the others, they had a beer and wine, and then they upgrade, is.
Sure, sure. Not, no, not so much lately, because I, I think there are a lot, a lot, I think there are a few who have beer/wine licenses who would like to have a, all, a full alcohol license. And that came up a couple of years ago, and there were quite a few who were really interested in it. And this was the direction that we pushed them in, and said, well, if you want that, go for an over-quota. But not a lot did. And I think part of it, too, is, I think, as we all know, as members of the community, that there's not a lack of place to get, go in East Hampton to have the, take advantage of a full bar. So I don't think it's, it's such a huge demand.
Sorry, Counselor Winnie. Counselor Winnie?
On the last paragraph, if a license granted pursuant to a section is canceled, revoked, or no longer in use at the location of original issuances, the license shall be returned physically without legal rights, privileges, and restrictions pertaining thereto to the licensing board, and may then grant the license to a new applicant at the same location, under the same conditions as specified in the act. So there, goes back to the earlier question that was posed, that, so if somebody bought an existing restaurant that already had an over-quota license, that license would automatically turn over to the new owner? Or no matter what, the licenses all have to go back to the licensing board to then be reissued to a new owner?
Correct.
I, I like that, because I think that anybody going into any kind of business needs, especially with alcohol, needs to be scrutinized and vetted out before that license gets turned over to them, so.
Counselor Winnie, that's, that's the way I, I was assuming it as well, is, I guess what I was saying before is it's not going back to the ABCC.
Right.
It's not like they have to start from the beginning.
Goes back to you.
It comes back to the licensing.
I have, I was looking up here for a second.
I'm good with that.
Just to clarify, that's, Counselor Winnie, that's in the second of the last paragraph, where it defines that, that it.
All right. I, I didn't go to section two, all right. Jeez.
That was one of my concerns also. In addition, it would seem that if we do nothing tonight, then the process becomes extended for anyone coming in and looking for a license. They would then have to start the whole process, go by us, go to the legislature. We shorten the process if we act today, and then you end up with four licenses in your possession. So if somebody coming into town has a, has a much shorter process.
Right.
To set up their business or to, or to accommodate a transfer. Does that?
Are you great? Yes.
But by, by how much time, how much time do we save?
Well.
Is it six months to get through the legislature, a year?
Well, it's definitely, it's definitely on the shoulders of the applicant to push the process along, because as you said, I mean, you pretty much explained exactly what the process is. They come to us for a recommendation, then they go to you for an endorsement, and then they go to the state legislature for, to be signed off on, then it comes to us, back to the, to the, to the licensing board to then approve it, and then it goes to the ABCC to finally get approved. So there are a lot of steps involved with it. Although we have seen some people come in and get it done within a matter of a month, month and a half. It's, those people were well-prepared, and they put their, you know, had their ducks in a row, and knew what they were doing, and knew who they, who they had to talk to, and did it in a timely fashion. So, you know, it can be cumbersome if you make it cumbersome.
Counselor Winnie?
I was just going to say that what this does is it takes it off the plate of us for at least eight licenses. So they don't have to come to us to then have to go to the legislature, do the vote and all of that, so I think it's going to streamline the process.
I'm not ignoring the, I actually saw Counselor Smith's hand, and I called her Counselor Winnie.
I just, when we, when ordinance was meeting about this, some of the concerns that we had vetted, one was being a small city and having many children in the city and a lot lot of liquor establishments, how that would affect, um, the youth. And I really think it's important to bring up that we have a very strong healthy youth coalition within East Hampton that's received a lot of grant money for education for children. And I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing this forward if, if we hadn't considered that. And I've talked with members of the Healthy Youth Coalition who are saying similar, similar things, that if this comes forth, they're aware. Um, and the other thing that I really wanted to bring forth in regard to our reasoning for union, we are trying to be very respectful of the businesses that are already established within East Hampton and making sure that they're not feeling overcrowded, particularly when it comes to where are people going to go. And so picking Union Street as that median between the Cottage Street Cultural District and Main Street, if you look at the past few art walks, for example, they've really been trying to focus a lot and give more attention to that section of the city. So this really dovetails off of that as far as strategic planning. So I thought that should be a part of this conversation tonight as well.
Thank you. Counselor Hayes?
Um, I have a couple of questions for Counselor Derby and the rest of you who looked at this. So when you decided on the number eight, were you looking at any sort of percentage with the population, the way they're initially done, like we have one per thousand? And is that in line with the amount?
Counselor, just, just so Jason can sit down, does anyone have any more questions?
No, it's okay, I, I don't mind.
Okay, you're welcome, okay. Go ahead, down. Okay, sorry.
That if we are in line with the percentage increase that the other communities that you mentioned with, where Hadley had gotten so many?
Um, so you're correct that standard liquor licenses are awarded on a per capita basis. We did not use that formula to come to the number eight. What we, what we did was we threw around some ideas of what we thought, you know, East Hampton could bear and looked at, you know, the surrounding communities, how many they went for. And, you know, obviously we, we, we didn't go for as many as Holyoke or North Hampton or Hadley. But we wanted to make sure that we had enough that would, you know, entice businesses that might want to come to East Hampton, might want to open in East Hampton, so we could, you know, find that new growth. And we thought that eight, eight, uh, four full and four beer and wine was that sweet spot.
Okay. Um, and then I was also wondering if you had tied this with establishments that serve food, or these could just be bar rooms?
Um, we did not tie it directly to, how do you say it? Vic, Victorials?
Victorial.
Victorial?
Common victular.
Yes. Um, but I'm, I, that's more of the spirit, you know, that it would be tied to a restaurant or, or affiliated with, you know, some sort of an establishment that's already in existence, not just like a hole in the wall, um, bar necessarily.
Okay, but I don't really see that reflected here in any way.
It's, it's, we didn't, we did not tie it. We did not tie it.
Um, and then the other question I had is, I think it would make sense for, like, the breweries in town to just upgrade their licenses, you know? So these would be available to all the poor license that we just put out as well?
Counselor Ziegler, did you have?
Well, I was gonna actually follow up with Counselor Sikowski's question regarding the facilitation of the, the licenses, and it was the original, I'm sorry.
That was a bad slip.
I do apologize, JP. It was my intent to follow up regarding the question of the facilitation, and now I'm off track. Uh, it was the original intent that we would be trying to make East Hampton more desirable for the businesses who may be considering a, a location within the valley. And if you have towns that already have licenses available versus having to start the process from the very beginning, that was, you know, part of the consideration in, in doing so. And again, proposing eight licenses, we did look at the number of individuals within the, the residents within the city. And again, that was, you know, part of the consideration, of course, with the, the youth and everything else, that we're not overly heavy with establishments that, that serve alcohol. But again, it was considered the, the number over a ten-year expansion, but not following the one thousand, the one thousand limit. But just to follow up again, it was specifically meant to be more business friendly, if you will.
Counselor Riss?
Uh, just following up on, Counselor Winnie had asked about the transfer of a license or how a licensee who was canceled, revoked, or no longer in use at the location, and I don't know if this is a question for Jason or Counselor Derby, but if a license is removed and returned to the licensing board from a location, does the licensing board have the lo, the flexibility to send that license to a new location? Or is it that once it's issued at this location, it has to stay there? Always has to stay there?
Yep.
Even though no restaurant wants it now or nobody moves in?
Yep.
Real?
I mean, and that's what we, that's.
That's the, really? That seems too bad.
That's, that's the, you know, from all of the, the over quotas that we did, from all of the ones that we researched, that's the language that, that the legislature approves.
And that is the defining difference between a regular license and a.
Because it's non-transferable.
Right, which is, which is.
Well, no, I'm not saying that they were transferred. I'm, I was suggesting that the licensing board, who physically has it in hand, has the, has, now has, they have four now that they can issue to any location. Why can't they get that one back and issue it to a new location? It's still the licensing board doing it. I'm not saying that the owner transfers it. I'm saying the licensing board has the flexibility. I'm asking if that's possible, do you, do you?
No, I would say no, not, 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 not with this.
Once it's issued to a location, it stays there.
No. Because that, if you think about it, that would be kind of like the state just giving us these new licenses, not calling them over quota licenses, which they still technically are.
Right.
So if it's a, if it's not, if, if it, if you're not gonna use the language of over quota, then it's an actual license, which we don't have. It's still not a license we, I mean, it's a license we have, but it's not a free license that we get based on our population. So it still is under, it's governed by those same principles or the same rules in which it, it's there and it stays there.
So if I understand it, if you issue a license to a restaurant and the restaurant fails and decides not to be a restaurant?
Right.
And the building is turned into some other retail outlet, a convenience store, we lose the ability to use, that, that license still stays there?
I, I think, I think there's still a little gray area, area there. I mean, if they.
That's why I was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, well, I mean, I think that your example that you just gave, quite clearly know that that license would, wouldn't be able to go back at that same location. But I mean, if a restaurant that was a full-service restaurant with a liquor license, over quota liquor license, under these, under, under these provisions, if they closed and the license goes back to, to the licensing board, I think that if that, in the same location, that license could be reissued to something that was quite similar, doesn't have to be exactly the same, um, but it would, it would have to be.
But you don't have the right to move it to a new location, no matter what happens.
No, no.
They can be used up.
Okay, cool.
Any additional questions for, that's why Counselor Hayes.
I have one for Salem or the committee. During, any of your deliberations, did any of the, and I'll call them the transferable liquor license, people that have the transferable liquor licenses, the fifteen or sixteen, did they come to any of your, anybody opposed this, I guess?
No, we didn't hear anything from anybody. In the, the first over quota license we did, Casey came and was against it because he had bought a license for the Apollo. But he, you know, he eventually ended up getting an over quota for Galaxy. So, um, you know, since then, we haven't really had anybody come oppose.
Counselor Hayes?
Um, I think I really would like to see language in here tying it with a food establishment.
We, but, I mean, so I, I can respect that, and that was one of the things that was talked about. We specifically left it out because we weren't sure. We weren't sure what type of, um, you know, someone came up with a, a really interesting idea that wasn't a restaurant. We didn't want to necessarily tie it to serving food. And part of this process is, you know, having the flexibility to allow people to be creative about the businesses that they want to open, and it might not necessarily be a restaurant. It might be a brewery.
I, I can hear that, but I don't think it's the licensing board to necessarily be like a, a design review board on whether or not they like the concept of somebody's business. That shouldn't have, it should be applied fairly to everybody. And if they don't like the idea of a pool hall, or they do like the idea of a wine bar, they can't really pick one over the other.
But neither of those are, neither of those are food.
Did you want to speak that to Counselor Ziegler?
Yes, I was just gonna say, and again, as applying all things fairly, I heard the term earlier, a hole-in-the-wall establishment, but there could be a hole-in-the-wall establishment somewhere that would be in a location that might be prime for food trucks. And under the circumstances, that would be a viable, viable business here. So I, we weren't looking necessarily to limit it. Obviously, we would like to see many restaurants within the, within the city limits, but we didn't want to just limit it and say, okay, well, we're gonna carve so many out for just restaurants versus non-food.
I mean, 'cause my, my thought is that breweries are already set up. They already have all the insurance in place, they already have the bars set up, they already have a lot of their permitting in order. And if I was that business owner, I would jump on this in a hot second. I mean, I think, I think that's what's gonna happen with your, your first three licenses. Well, bam. I mean, it might not be something that people want to take on right away, but I, I see that happening.
Any additional comments? Jason, I, I will let you sit down. I did have one question for you, if you don't mind. Sure, okay.
Can I, before we go on, would you be opposed to that?
No.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that was part of your.
Oh, no, I mean, I think these are, you know, there's some businesses in town that are prime, that are gonna just absolutely jump on this right away. You know, I think possibly the Mexican restaurant that's in town that has beer and wine, and I know they've wanted a full liquor license. So I see these four going immediately and that not bringing in any new businesses, just improving what we have, which is great and not a bad thing.
Jason, a question, just 'cause I, this does come up, people ask me, oh, I'm afraid of too many liquor licenses. Without being too exhaustive, there are quite a few regulations are already in place for protecting things like distances from school, differences from church. Churches, is there anything else you could speak to about, or is that pretty much it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly, um, to what Counselor Hayes had said, I mean, it, it is true that the licensing board, it doesn't, you know, there's no design review or anything like that, certainly. It is taken into consideration with the feasibility of what the business is. I know I'm not answering your question immediately, but certainly, I just wanted to speak to that. There is, there is some consideration as to, well, what is the feasibility of this? Now, to, to your question, yeah, I mean, we definitely, there are things that we, that are, as you said, that were mandated to go by. And we certainly look at where it's being placed all the time, you know, is this, is this really appropriate for, for, for what, what is gonna go on here? So yes, it, it, all that is taken into consideration whenever there's any kind of liquor license that comes before us.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one question for the committee.
I'm sorry, just for, just, I, I don't know, maybe because I've had back pain, I just want to.
I think Counselor Winnie just likes me. Out of tension.
I do, Jason, I do like you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I continue, continue discussion here.
Um, one of the questions that, um, that has come up into my mind is, um, in regards to having four all alcoholic and then four wine and beer, would it be prudent, change that number to a higher amount of all beer? I mean, or higher, to all liquor, all liquor as opposed to doing four and four? The only reason why I'm saying that is, is Counselor Hayes makes a very good point that, um, I don't, I don't know how many, do you know how many beer and wine licenses that are out there that aren't taken? Do we have any available out there? Just yes or no?
Yes, we know.
Yes, there are, or no, there isn't?
Beer and wine?
Beer and wine.
Do you have any free licenses?
Beer and wine.
Licenses right now? No, we do not.
Okay, so they've all been taken. All right.
I, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking, are there any that have been issued that aren't being used?
Oh, yeah.
That's a good question too. Are there?
That's a, that's a yes.
We don't have that kind of.
Yes, there are?
There's one that I know of, yeah. I think there's.
Is it beer and wine or all alcohol?
It's a full license, full license.
Full license. Oh.
Chapman, I think it's a. I think he's working towards it.
No, he's not just, it's Will Bundy's, that's the one that he bought from Casey, that's not being used.
Okay, so, all right, with, well, with that being said, eventually that will probably get used, obviously.
Be used anyway.
So I, I just, I don't know, do you, do you think it might make sense be, to do this beforehand, now going forward, to increase the number of all liquor?
Six and two.
Then, then just going four and four. I, I'm just throwing it out there for everybody to just kind of think about and, and to discuss. You know, Counselor Hayes raises a valid point that she, she's thinking that four will automatically jump right onto the, to the all alcohol and, of course, then that would open up the beer and wines on the other hand, or so, I don't know.
Counselor Riss, I thought I had here.
My, my only question is how many, going to the fact that maybe some current beer and wine licenses would want to upgrade, do you have a quantity of beer and wine licenses currently issued, over quotas in town?
There's no over quota beer and wine.
Uh-uh.
So there are, there are no beer, there were some beer and wine, but they're regular licenses?
They're all.
So a regular license beer and wine could upgrade using this over quota to full alcohol if they want to?
And I, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the original license would go back to the licensing board.
Mm-hmm.
So, so with that in mind, then Counselor Winnie suggested might be pertinent, because if we go to six all alcohol or even eight, the beer and wine licenses that are currently out there that are not over quota would go back to the licensing board, so we will still have those available to businesses that really don't want to go all alcohol. So by changing the number, we are not necessarily limiting ourselves, because we still have the beer and wine capability of those licenses that would go back to the licensing board. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that's how I'm thinking, yeah.
I, I saw Counselor Smith.
Okay, I was going to ask if we are going to make those change. I think we should consider putting, at least for some of them, the food, what Counselor Hayes was talking about, putting the food as part of the establishment. Not all of them, but I would like to see some of them that way.
I mean, I think if you feel strongly about, they could be made as an amendment to the motion when the motion is made.
Uh-huh.
Need to be in writing.
I think we'd have to send that back to committee.
Yeah.
For that kind of language change.
Counselor?
Hayes.
I know, nobody knows anybody's name tonight. Now I forget what I was gonna say. Somebody else go, I'll remember.
I, I guess I'm, look, I'm thinking of what Counselor Hayes said earlier, and, um, if, if we're trying to channel these to one particular area and it seems like a consensus and maybe not something we want to restrict, we're trying to also kind of have it part of food. I think keeping it the way it's currently before the committee makes more sense because I think very few people would open up a pure alcohol establishment with no food, that's beer and wine. But if they get a full liquor license, then they could open up a, a full bar and not have to have the food. I think food establishments would take both, but I do think that if you have too many of the all liquor, then you could get more of a chance of someone coming forward and saying, I'm just gonna open up a straight bar. That, that would be my opinion of, to keep it four and four.
Counselor Hayes?
I remembered. So we're, the city is at our limit with beer and wine licenses only.
All, all licenses?
All.
All.
All of them.
So full liquor, beer and wine.
Okay.
They're all issued.
That's why it's over.
I didn't know we had a limit on those. How many beer and wine licenses? I know we have sixteen full liquor because of our population, how many beer and wine onlys do we have?
Can you help us, Jason?
You don't need to get up, Jason.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell.
Looks like Mary knows, Mary.
This is a preview. Wine and malt restaurant licenses are current for Village Pizza at 100 Union Street, East Hampton Diner at 117 Union, and La Casita Esteca at 58 Cottage. And those are the wine and malt restaurant licenses.
So, I mean, I didn't think we had a limit in town on beer and wine. I thought that was something that we could.
There's some seasonal licenses which can be.
Seasonal as well. So, I mean.
Special licenses.
Does it seem like we would probably have maybe the same amount as all alcohol licenses?
None.
I'm sorry, so you're thinking we should ask for sixteen, or, or, I mean?
The city has three beer and wine licenses.
Right.
And we're saying we're maxed at three.
By the population.
By the state, right. Population, by the state numbers, yeah.
And that seems a lot less than the sixteen all alcohol. Like, I have trouble believing that we only have three in the city to hand out.
Don't know.
So, I mean, if we have ten.
Oh, Mary, sorry, if you can help us out, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So those are the three, um, beer and wine restaurant licenses, Village Pizza, East Hampton Diner, and La Casita Esteca. William Bundy over at Eastworks owns a general on-premise beer and wine for his event space.
Right.
Luthiers has a general on-premise wine and malt. And then you've got your three breweries.
Right, and then the breweries.
We have five generals that can be transferred.
Yeah. Sounds about right.
But we don't know what the limit is for the city, so we could have a limit of like ten beer and wine licenses, which means we wouldn't necessarily need these four legislators.
I don't think we have any available licenses.
We have no, none available. Jason says.
Jason, are you able to help us out on that?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, do you know, we, the question is how, as I believe it is, how many beer and wine licenses we have?
That, off the top of my head.
Available. Available.
I have the, I have the list.
But as far as you know, we have no extras.
We don't have any available at this moment.
I don't believe we do.
Because I know Shelburne Falls Coffee Roasters had gotten one, and I know that came back. I don't know where that ended up.
Oh, sorry, let me go down here to time Counsel Krasinski.
I like the idea of extending to eight full, and I like the idea of tying a portion of those to restaurants. It seems to help move our city forward in terms of expanding the possibilities and yet still indicating that we really would like to see some of the licenses be used in restaurants and for certain purposes. If this requires us to go back to committee to discuss that some more, I'm certainly in favor of that.
I think I saw, Joy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I still think because we're, we're at our full capacity for beer and wine, there's a lot of places or a lot of restaurants or whatever that will come in and just want a beer and wine and not want, I mean, specialized wine, you know, a restaurant comes in and they're going to go with high-end wines and whatever, they're, they're only going to want the beer and wine license. They're not going to want to get into the mixologies of the full liquor licenses. So I really think that having some over quota beer and wine licenses available because we're at our max makes sense in a lot of ways, too, so.
Just to comment on that, just quickly, I, I can see that point, but if I were in business and what was available was a full license and I didn't want to serve full alcohol, doesn't prohibit me, it wouldn't prohibit you from serving high-end wines, I would assume. You could still have the full license and restrict yourself as to what you serve.
You have a point.
Counsel Riss? I was going to say that I tend to agree that we should go with a few more full alcohol, only because if we're thinking, as I think Counsel Hayes mentioned, that a current beer and wine licensee, which has a general license, which would be go back to licensing board, it could be transferred, would want to upgrade with the over quota, then we're not limiting ourselves with the beer and wine, Counsel Winnie. So I think we would still have those available. But I see the, I see, I don't think I'd want to go to eight, but I, I see six and two as being possible. I'm not sure if tying it to food is necessary, and I'm only saying that because, and I'm not sure, maybe the committee needs to discuss it more, but tying it to food seems limiting. This doesn't preclude, Counsel Derby, someone coming in from a restaurant that's already serving, that, that plans a restaurant, they're going to serve food, and they only want to, they want a all-alcohol license. They could still serve food. What you're trying to do is establish some of them, or what the suggestion is establish some of them, they have to be food. And I, I think that's a restriction that we don't want to make, because we want to open up more business possibilities. It doesn't prevent someone from having a restaurant with food, but it also allows for a bar that doesn't want to serve food.
Or something even more creative.
More creative. I, I'd like to keep the food idea out of it, but I would be willing to go to six, only because of the notion that people would upgrade. And I, I will actually make that in the form of an amendment. If we go to, if we wanted to do food, you'd have to send it back to committee, I believe, for new language, because it's too much of a change. But changing a number from four to six, and four to two, doesn't, to me, need further committee discussion unless the council wants them to do that, except the council.
So you're making that, did you write that out?
I will, well, when the, when the, when the, when the motions are ready to be put forward, because I don't know if politics done or not. I saw Counsel Hayes, you had your hand up?
I would also be in favor of sending this back to committee, my apologies. But I think that, you know, we do have a couple of members of the press here, we've brought up a lot of interesting points. I think we're going to be hearing from the community about this, and I think we need to give ourselves a little bit of space to incorporate that, because, I mean, everybody's brought up a lot of great points, and I'm sure there's some information that, and some points that we haven't thought of. I, I mean, there's some compelling pros and cons on both sides of this, because I've been looking at it for a while, and speaking with business owners, and as a, you know, restaurant consultant myself and looking at this, I mean, the, the way you can, the margin on a restaurant is, is really small, and your alcohol sales are where you're going to actually make your money. So that's why I'm kind of saying that, is that anybody who's doing beer and wine, you're going to make a better margin on this. If I had a beautiful craft beer bar with just my beer and wine license, I would love to have a selection of really great bourbon to go with it. Maybe not necessarily a full bar, but there are many, many ways these licenses can be interpreted and, and used, and, and you, you know, you're, you're right with the food. I like the idea of tying it to the food, but if somebody wants to open up a really cool, you know, arcade and serve, serve beer at it, that sounds cool, too, so you don't want to limit. But I think, I think we need to, to look at this. I think we need some public feedback. I'm kind of disappointed that we don't have anybody from the public here, because it seems like an issue that people would really care about and want some input on.
Counsel Derby?
So just to speak to the process just a little bit, our, our committee did have three meetings specifically to discuss this. This public hearing right now is not necessary. We, we, the committee decided to hold a public hearing as a courtesy to the community, but this particular topic does not require a public hearing. So I feel, I feel pretty comfortable with the amount of time and, you know, I, it's been, it's been in the paper, it's, it, all of our meetings were advertised, this meeting was advertised. So I'm, I'm comfortable, you know, moving this forward, and, and I, I would actually agree with Counsel Riss that I think that that number would be, would be acceptable.
Six and two. Counsel Ziegler?
I, too, am in agreement with not only the process being open and over an extended period of time, but also with the, the six and two. But I also just wanted to say, I really appreciated Counsel Hagan's suggestion, too, regarding the, keeping some of the, the beer and wine just for more of the innovated purposes, innovative purposes, or those are more of the ones that'll probably be tied with, with food. And so, I mean, I've been back and forth between four and four, but I completely agree that by keeping them just beer and wine, it does allow for those more niche markets or, you know, potentially your, your restaurateurs.
So you're okay with six and two?
I'm completely fine with six and two, though, just because of the upgrades.
Again, I'm, I'd like the four and four that the committee came up with. I think there was a lot of deliberation. You said you had three meetings, and again, to change it to 11,000, I mean, I guess I support the committee, you know, maybe we can even compromise at five and three. But again, I, I'll, I'll leave it for a voter when, when somebody actually makes a motion. I do appreciate the work of the committee, and I think it was vetted pretty well.
Counsel Riss? The only reason I suggested six, just to reinform the committee, is the notion that a current all-alcohol license owner would, or, I'm sorry, beer and wine owner with a standard license would upgrade to all alcohol. That gives us the beer and wine license back. And what's good about that license, it's not tied to a location. It's a regular license, and it can go to a new owner in a new location. So we're not losing beer and wine, which is why I'm suggesting we go to six, because the other hand, if a lot of these all alcohols get used up, if we only have four, they get used up by people wanting to expand to all alcohol, then we're stuck with four beer and wine plus the four all alcohols that were, were, used to be beer and wine, and we have eight of them. So my feeling is have more of the all alcohol, because we're not going to lose the beer and wine, because I'm, I'm thinking of the upgrades that'll happen. I think that's very possible. So that, that was my reasoning, anyway.
I agree.
Counsel Hayes?
So if we vote on this tonight, I'm, I'm going to be abstaining, because both of these areas are in District Two, and I don't feel like I've done my due diligence with talking to people in the community that this is going to directly affect. And I didn't mean that to sound like you guys have not put forward, I mean, we don't get a lot of public input. It's really hard. And I don't want to, I don't want to misstep on this, especially as someone who, who works in restaurants. I bartend, I have a lot of friends who own a lot of the restaurants in town. I really, I need to, to talk to people and see how people feel about this, because I think there's, there's great compelling arguments on both sides. I, I really don't feel strongly, you know, right now, one way or the other.
I think I saw Counsel Smith.
I'm not sure who brought it up, but when we're looking at the alcohol, the beer and wine, or wine and malt licenses becoming available, as I'm going to be clear, are we talking about, we're not talking about over quota licenses, they were talking about existing licenses.
Right.
So the cost is much different, like, there's a whole different set of parameters for non-over quota versus over quota. So I just, I didn't want to not have that come out as part of the knowledge in this process. I mean, yes, that would become available, but at a much higher cost. So now you might have two licenses that are over quota at a much different cost for the restaurateur or the bar, you know, the bar, than the over quota one. And that, I think, could cause a lot more friction than having them.
That cost, though, is market-driven, and that cost may very well have, because of these, may very well have dropped precipitously.
Did you have your, Counsel Krasinski, too, at one time?
I did, but, okay.
My suggestion, given what Counsel Hayes has said, and that we've all been thinking about this a lot, the committee has done a lot of due diligence on it, but most of us have just started really looking at it as often we put a lot of burden on our committees to give us the information. I'm going to suggest that we continue this public hearing to the next meeting, not to change anything in it, unless the committee wants to come back and change it, and maybe Counsel Hayes has time to talk to people, but that we vote on it at the next meeting. I'm going to make a suggestion that we do that. It's just a, I'm not making a motion to do that, I'm just suggesting that that's what I think we ought to do.
Let me say, if you put that in the form of a motion, I would second and vote in favor of that.
Okay. Counsel.
Well, I was actually, I think what Counsel Smith brought up about the cost brings up a really good point. So if the cost of buying, say, one of those beer and wine licenses that can be sold, that isn't tied to a location, because it's not a legislative license, what would, will people still be able to apply for legislative licenses if we use up all of these eight as well, right? So there wouldn't be a reason for them to pay the market rate for any of the licenses, because they could just go for the over limit.
If it becomes available.
If it becomes available, right.
I was going to say, just to clarify, I believe what would happen if someone upgraded to an over quota from a beer and wine, they would go back to the licensing board, and it would be the licensing board's discretion to reissue that. There would be no costs involved.
Right. Right. Counsel.
That's what I was going to say. If somebody that's holding a beer and malt or wine and malt license right now want to upgrade, they are going to have to turn, they won't be able to sell that license. They are going to have to physically turn that license into the licensing board to do the upgrade. There's not going to be any selling or buying of those licenses. It's a quick quote pro. You're going to take it, you're going to give it back to the licensing board, and, and then apply for the full liquor license, which then encompasses that plus more.
Counsel Riss? Mr. President, if it's appropriate, I'll make the motion that we continue this public hearing to the next meeting. And during, at that time, I'd ask the committee to seek out numbers from the current licenses that are held in town, because that seemed to be a question. It's part of the motion. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion concerning the continuation? Okay, all those in favor? Oppose, abstain? Mr. President, I move that public hearings be closed.
Second.
So motion is second, close public hearings, all those in favor?
Continue.
I'm sorry. No, yeah, we continue. We continued the last one. Close the motion. Today's, sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. We continued, we're closing the session of public hearings.
Tonight's session. We're continuing the public hearings to the next meeting, right? Is that correct?
There's only one public hearing.
All right, good, forget it.
We are, we are continuing.
I'm just asking if you can get the numbers of current licenses, both beer and wine and alcohol that are listed, so. Okay, I believe we're caught up with all business, new business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.